Can you speak, Commissioner?
It is 9:59. I want to vote for the motion, Commissioners. This point in time, I will entertain a motion to resume the regular Board of County Commissioners.
So move.
Second motion.
Commissioner, yes, Commissioner, sir.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
It is now 10:00 AM. Today is Tuesday, August 19, 2025. I'm going to call this public hearing to order. And for purposes of information, let us be reminded that at this time, as we ask for testimony from either opponents or proponents, all testimony to be given to these Board of County Commissioners is going to be under sworn oath and shall be done in a very respectful manner. At any point in time that there is a deviance and that the conversation is not to remain in this particular hearing, I will call the meeting and the person back to order. It is the prerogative of these Board of County Commissioners to conduct business in the most respectful manner, yet professional in a way that we can attain and achieve the end result. The chairman, which I am, has the authority to basically stop the meeting if there is any deviance from that. So at this point in time, as we open up this particular meeting, we're going to be calling individuals. You're going to be sworn in. Please give us your name and we will be asking questions. So this is going to be kind of a Q and A back and forth as we go through the process. And as the notice was posted to be held at this particular time, it is important that we keep it within. So now we have two hearings and there is no limit for any one of those two hearings. It could go on for 15, 20 minutes. It could go for a couple of hours. But at the end of the day, the Board of County Commissioners has to collect all the data and respond to all the questions based upon the application that we had in front of us. So having said all that, I want to welcome the applicant for VR 2025-002 by Ralph and Victoria Sianajul, seeking to like a Terra Canyon Ranch Estate. So let me call first of all, before we get you up here, the Las Ananas County Land Use Director, Mr. Sean Rogan. Sir, would you please raise your right hand?
Salve, firmament of penalty perjury. The testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name.
Sean Rogan. I felt like I was getting married again. Good morning, Commissioners. Our first thing is vacating of Terra Canyon Ranches. It is a subdivision that was planned in 2007. It was never subdivided from its initial... The plans were submitted, but none of the lots were ever subdivided. So it is still just one large parcel right now. We... My office has not received any communication from the neighbors about going against the vacating of this subdivision. The neighbor did reach out to Paula when she received a letter just asking for communication on this. We do have the two certified letters that Ralph and Vicky... Sorry, I'm not going to try to murder the name. I've done that enough in these meetings.
I've done that already.
But we sent them just the packet again and we've not heard back from them. And this is really, it's a pretty... They're the only... They own all the whole subdivision. So they could just be doing with the subdivision going back to the agricultural.
So this is inclusive of the 841 acres, correct? During the year, we have 14 different lots.
Yes, but the lots were never subdivided.
Okay. And for that, I want to follow up by hearing the moment with our Las Ananas County Assessor. But for now, the property... The meeting was held, of course, at the Land Use...
Yes.
Planning Commission. And this are going to be a couple of questions for the owners of this particular property. But on this, Mr. Rogan, is this particular property, from your understanding, as the renter? Is it agricultural land?
It is. There is only, from my understanding about it, there is only one easement in there and it is a two-track road. And it's pretty much bare farmland out there. And all of the land around it is all agricultural land as well.
Thank you. For now, that's the only two questions, Commissioners.
And that two-track that doesn't record through the property, that stops at the creek, right?
I hope so, yes. Worsted.
Is it, is a two-track road accessed off of the canyon?
It is not. It goes through the neighbor's property.
Through the neighbor's property?
Yes, to get into that subdivision.
And that neighbor is the one that's been certified?
Yes.
Well, what's for the record, Mr. Rogan, can you please highlight the letter that you received from the neighbor?
Um, I did not. It came back through Paula's email.
It was like an email.
One second.
Salve, firmament of penalty perjury. The testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Hi, please state your name and position.
Paula Lucero, exactly, this is. And yes, I have received an email just requesting more information from the neighbor so that they could see what was being requested in this vacation.
Okay. But that was not your responsibility to provide a response. That personally went back to the owners.
Um, I did... I talked to the Land Use Director and I think I might have talked to them. But I did talk to Sean and he said, yes, we'll head forward with the packets. So that's what I did.
Very good. And we'll follow up with a question on that. Very good. Commissioners, no more questions. Mr. Rogan, please have a seat. And then let me call Assessor Amaro. I want to make sure that as we go through this process, good morning again and thank you for staying with us.
Salve, firmament of penalty perjury. Do you solemnly affirm penalty perjury? The testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name and position.
My name is Jodi Amato and I am the Las Ananas County Assessor.
Thank you once again, Mr. Amaro. My question to you is, as is stated on this particular application, that there are 14 tracks that were never recorded.
There are 14 tracks within that planted subdivision. They were recorded. They are just drawn outlines on a recorded map. They have not been developed. They are not... The lots never had roads put into utilities, things of that nature. So they are just lots on a piece of paper that was recorded.
So from your perspective, if this particular application would be approved, for the assessor perspective, it would become just one track of the 800 lot centers?
That is correct, Commissioner. It would just be 841 owned by the landowners and it would be designated as agricultural. Currently, I have to value it as a subdivision because it is a recorded planted subdivision within our county. So it would be advantageous to the taxpayer if it were... If this subdivision was dissolved, then my office is obligated to put it back into the use of agricultural because it is canyon land and grazing, ranching.
Very good, Commissioners. I just wanted to confirm that if you wouldn't mind, please stay in the room.
I will stay here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Let me go ahead and call on the owners and the applicants at this time.
Do you solemnly affirm penalty perjury? The testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
I do.
And then please state your names.
Victoria Sianjul.
Vicky.
Ralph Sianjul. Ralph.
Now we know how to say that last name.
Yes, Sianjul.
Very good. Well, thank you once again for appearing before us today. My only question that I have for you again for us is not... Or not... I'm not interested in finding out if you have access to your property. That's going to be between somebody else's property and you. And so as you go through the process, that becomes two landowners giving access and giving easements to one another. The only question that I have here for you, it is... I know you're doing a lot of cleanup and one of the related perspectives and questions is as you go through the process, is the mitigation of your property and the disposal of any material in the property? That's really the only question that I have at this point.
So there's not a whole bunch to mitigate out there because it's just dry grazing canyon land. There is an old shed that's actually on the assessor's bill that the roof has fallen in. It's basically garbage. At one point in time, on the original subdivision flat, they had a long, narrow thing that they said they were going to make an airport out of. Or not, obviously. But there's an old, old, just a framework of like a mobile trailer up there also. We'll probably just leave it because I don't know how we'd ever get it out because we do have a deeded access road into this property. It is deeded access. However, there is a creek that we have to cross that is almost impossible to do with a full rail pickup truck. So we do need to talk to the neighbors a little bit more. They have total speed and smooth it out or do whatever it is we need to to get to there. But there's no utilities or anything. So it's just a matter of us loading up a trailer and trying to get the jump out and taking it to the dump here is what we'd end up probably doing.
We're at the mercy of Mother Nature to get in there.
Yeah, with this, whether it's been the spring and summer, we haven't even been there this year, so.
Well, see, you could probably go to the airport.
Yeah, right, yeah. And then I could fly a plane and yeah.
Okay, can I? Not happy.
Commissioners, any questions?
I have one, a couple of questions. I think you mentioned one is I was a planning director when this was initially.
Okay, okay.
And I knew they had a lady that was doing a plan of one area straight up there.
Yeah.
And I was curious if she owned it yet.
No, no.
Is this property fenced?
It is fenced mostly.
Mostly?
Not 100% where the canyon almost go down. There's not a fence on that side for most of our neighbor.
Last... I'm sorry. Last year, we went and tried to fix as much as we could because there were cattle.
From the neighbor?
Yeah. So we're just trying to understand it. This is all due to us. So we're doing the best we can to make that safe. That's all, ma'am.
Commissioner, no questions. We're going to have a seat. I'm going to follow up with another question for Assessor Amaro.
I'm still under oath of the right to.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, ma'am. I agree, of course, you know, statutorily, as far as we... To reclaim property. In your experience, how many landowners have come before us to request this type of a transaction?
This will be the third one in my time. We had a subdivision that was out north and west of the highway that went through this same process about five years ago. So, and it was the almost identical situation. Agricultural land, grazing ground. There was two owners in that subdivision and they both came forward and asked that the subdivision be vacated.
Very good. Commissioners, have any other questions? And thank you, Assistant.
You're welcome.
Now that we have the proponent's testimony, let me go ahead and ask anyone in the audience or online that would be opposed, any opponent, for the Las Ananas County Board of Commissioners approval and or denial of the vacation of Terra Canyon Ranch Estates. Anyone online or present that would be willing to provide testimony against? Third and last time, I'm going to call on anyone that would be here to provide testimony against this particular request. Hereina, Commissioners, if it is the desire of the Board to take this into executive session, I would be amenable to that. Otherwise, I think we have enough information, Commissioners. But let me go ahead and appeal that back to you. In front of us, we have this request. Is it the desire of the Commissioners to go into executive session or not? I don't know. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Well, hereina, then I'm going to entertain a motion.
With to approve VR 2025-002 by Ralph and Victoria Sianjul, seeking to vacate Terra Canyon Ranch Estates.
I'll second that. Commissioner, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And this portion of this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good day. And now I'm going to call on application MF 2025-02 by E.G. Fisher's LLC Fisher Solar for destruction of a utility solar scale solar PV with a collocated battery storage facility. Again, I think all of you were present when I read the rules and regulations of engagement. So I'm not going to repeat those. Let us now... This portion of this public hearing is open and let me call our Land Use Director, Mr. Rogan.
I feel like I was just on here.
Well, you're going to have to raise your hand once again. Once again, oh.
It's new here. Salve, firmament of penalty perjury. The testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name and position.
Sean Rogan, Las Ananas County Planning and Land Use Director.
Thanks.
All right. So for your consideration today, we have MF 2025-02 by E.G. Fisher. It's their solar project. They came to our planning commission and presented their plans for their project. We did receive communication from CDOT with their concerns on the project. They have reached out to CDOT and are working on that. In the planning commission meeting, we did have questions about decommissioning and reclamation plans for the project. I spoke in the meeting and said that I didn't know, so I didn't know. But they have brought in a new decommissioning and reclamation claim for the facility. This was approved by planning commission, all three members of the planning commission. And we had, besides the CDOT letter, we had real communication going against the project.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan. And this time I... I don't have any questions, but please have a seat. And let me call on the proponent of this project.
Salve, firmament of penalty perjury. The testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And please state your name.
Dale Harris. My address is 425 Fresh Street, Dallas, Texas.
Good morning, Mr. Harris. How are you?
Very good. Good morning to you, sir.
It is still morning, this... Perhaps not in Texas, but thank you so much for us submitting this application to Las Ananas County Land Use. And then to us, I have a few questions for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
The comments, of course, you attended the Land Use meeting. And in this particular one, as Colorado moves through the Senate Bill 2412, there is so much of need to create a facility, to have the grid developed, to actually have additional energy flowing through the highways and byways. One of, of course, this is not anything that we have in control. But one of the questions that was asked of you on the particular meeting, would the citizens of Las Ananas County benefit from some of this energy? Well, I think at the end of the day, you're probably going to sell it on the open market. And it is, of course, at the end of the day, private land agreement. But nonetheless, when it comes to the regulations of sitting the project, decommissioning the project and going through the process, it is the responsibility of the Board to extract any and all information pertinent from the start to the decommissioning process. So the... My question to you, we... There was a question, obviously, NIPA, the National Fire Protection Association Standards, so on and so forth. I would imagine that the requirements, both from the landlord as well as the developer, are going to be such that it is going to be maintained, meeting all of those fire standards as we go through the fire department. And you mentioned that you would remember with the proper... With the proper authorities on that issue. So great for that. Let me ask you the right question here. The batteries used have undergone rigorous testing. Where are the batteries developed and or manufactured?
So this project is still going to be two and a half years out from construction. So the exact manufacturer of the battery has not been determined yet. But all of the batteries that we utilize on our facilities will go through the NFPA standards, which is the National Fire Protection Association Standards. And currently, the most commercially viable battery is going to be a lithium-ion phosphate batter. And they put these batteries through thermal runway testing, which is where they test the individual cells. And if those individual cells then propagate during thermal runway to the rest of the cells, it fails the test. Then they'll put the entire module through thermal runway. If those modules propagate to the rest of the modules, they fail the test. So they go through much more rigorous testing than we're going to see in the EV because we have learned from our mistakes in the past.
And let me continue and follow up with the same question. The reason I'm asking, where are the batteries manufactured? Recently, the Colorado General Assembly put a document saying that we should not be procuring, as far as, of course, speaking to county government, any items manufactured and produced and extracted with child labor. And that's what I mean. You know, one of the things that if we're going to... And someplace in here, there is mention that it is to be made in the USA. At this point in time, you know, part of the whole concept is obviously the safety and wellness, not only of the implementation and installation of these batteries, but also make sure that everyone that contributed to the lithium mining extraction was not exposed to some life-threatening hazard. And I think that's kind of what I'm getting to. And since you're two and a half years away from that, I'm hoping and really encouraging to get this made in the USA.
Me too, sir. And if we see some of the things that are going on with the tariffs, it's making it much more commercially viable to be sourcing here from the US.
That's a capitalmost adventure waiting to happen, right? So the... One of the questions that I want to get to, and of course, as Mr. Rogan mentioned, the decommission agreement. We have, the Board of County Commissioners, back in 2023, we gave a resolution with the decommissioning. And let me also remind, and just for the record, that recently, as Commissioner Tony has mentioned, said, Bill 2412 specifically says that decommissioning of any project has to meet the land regulations. So in a sense, someplace in here in the document I read, it would be good for the landlord at that time to actually keep those, the steel on the property, they can actually resell it. One thing that I don't want us to see in Las Ananas County or any other county is a barnyard, stacked up pieces of equipment that could possibly lynch into the groundwater sources and so on. And then, of course, we don't know what's going to happen with just the floor and the farm. That's going to be one of the things. But my question to you, are you... You said I'm open for reclamation, for decommissioning and revegetation. One of the things that in our yield of Florida Commissioner Tony has, because one of the things that we in this hurry up and get it done, one of the things that I think sometimes is overlooked is the agricultural impact to those lands in the 30 years. In the last meeting that we were at, at state level, my question was, well, how many projects have been decommissioned? Not many so far because this is fairly new. Now, when we're beginning to see piles and piles in some of the states of these materials, I just wouldn't want to see that. But I'm kind of giving you the whole picture of where we're coming from. But, and I see that there is amicably, you have said, yes, we'll work with the decommissioning to include the bonding. Now, one of the questions that we also bring up and is the bond initially is something that we don't know what's going to happen in 30, 40 years. That market, and that's one of the businesses why in the resolution we talk about renewing that every so many years, every so often, because of the market. We don't know what's going to happen with this supply. We don't know how many more energy sources are going to be entering the market. But that is kind of where I'm coming from. And as far as, you probably have a copy of our resolution?
Yes, sir, I do now.
Very good. And so going through that, do you have any objection to complying with the resolution as written?
No, sir. If you see, we did submit a full decommissioning and reclamation plan where we estimated our bond and was done in conjunction with a licensed Colorado engineer. I do apologize. In that first hearing, we had missed that resolution. So the checklist that we had submitted, we did not have that full plan in place. In our agreements with our landowners, we do state that we will decommission the project and reclaim it, which is what I would have been referencing in the last hearing. Now, after reviewing those resolutions, we put together a full plan. And if you see, our estimated bond is approximately $21 million.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I really appreciate that. And Assessor Amaro?
We worked very hard to get that. I submitted that yesterday.
Yes.
Well, actually, this morning at about 6:00 AM.
Yes. I want to use this as kind of a launching pad to, as we look at financial generation, agricultural farming, the heroes that is coming behind us. We want to leave that land pristine back to them. And part of the job of an electric official is, of course, to be the stewards. And if you will, the mediator when it comes to the conversation, not exactly what I was speaking of. But let me go ahead and yield the word to my Board of Commissioners. I have a couple of other questions.
I guess I have a question on your project's start date is fourth quarter 2020.
Yes, sir. That is if everything goes as I told.
The federal government has implemented to do with all the incentives by 2027. If you haven't started the budget, is that going to affect your project?
So to say it wouldn't have an effect would be incorrect. It will have some effect, but it still should be commercially viable because what it will do is it will increase the cost of electricity, you know, increase what we're selling that electricity for. So we still believe that these projects, not still believe, we know these projects are still going to be commercially viable. When you look at all the other types of energy sources out there and the lead times on those energy sources, solar is extremely commercially viable.
And then have you... Have you talked to Tri-State or are you making a... Or you were making a little about the intervarice system?
So there's a 230 KV tri-state transmission line running through the property that we intend to connect to. We will be filing an interconnection request in September, so about a month. And then by May of 2026, if it goes as planned, but the utilities can delay if they want to and they don't really have any control, we should be receiving what's called a system impact study, which will determine our network upgrade cost. So in our business, there is really two binary risks. One of them is what we are talking about today, our discretionary permit. The other is going to be interconnection. And it's not that they can deny us from connecting to the grid. They do have to allow for us to connect to that line. But it can be killed by what the network upgrade cost is, which can range anywhere from a few million dollars to a billion dollars.
And you are aware, whatever decision you make, the improvements are only good for a year?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. We will be coming in front of the Board in about a year and hopefully have more information on whether the project is going to be viable or not.
In regards to fire suppression, what kind of water storage are you going to have there?
I believe it's requested for us to have a 30,000 gallon tank. But whatever tank is required for us to have on site to mitigate the spread of fire, we will comply with. with.
God forbid there's a shortage and it causes a spark. You know, we don't need a grass fire.
We will have the water on site. And one of the things we are happy for you guys to make a condition of approval is that we comply with any emergency and safety response.
Good, so you're going to be meeting with our fire departments and educating them. You're going to get educated on how to battle a fire and maybe the lithium battery storage area?
So we are, if they need additional education or training, we're happy to bring in some more third party, third party fire consultants. We actually help write the NFPA eight fifty five standards. And we'll make sure that we are working with the fire department hand in hand throughout this process.
And refresh me here, where is that battery storage location going to be on what what area of this solar?
Do we have that presentation that I was going to go through? We can pull it up real quick and just show the site plan. So we have considered the location of this battery storage portion of the site and the substation for a multitude of reasons. One, because of the locations of the transmission line, but also due to the ease of access for emergency response. You'll see that it is located right off of Highway one sixty. And we have been working with the environmental agency, CPW, US Fish and Wildlife, as well as US Army Corps of Engineers. And to mitigate all of their concerns, we have added migration corridors, avoided wetlands. And you will see that the location of that, if we go a couple slides in real quick?
I know, of course. We have to better.
No problem. It should be like slide number four. One more. One more. One more, sorry. Right there, okay. You see, there's a migration corridor that goes directly through the middle of the site. We've avoided all of the wetlands there. And then the location of the battery storage and the substation is going to be directly off of one sixty towards the east of the project.
Thank you. And one more question regarding the septic here. It's talk some about a small septic system that you'd have to get counter approval for in regards for what? I'm curious.
We don't require to have a septic system approvals. On some of the larger sites, it could be beneficial to have one on site, but we can use basically porta potties. And the O and M building can can just be, you know, drained or cleaned on a month later by a monthly basis.
Okay. Is the road off of one sixty, what you turn off of one sixty, is that a county road that you?
No, sir, there is no county road there. Those are just two, that's all private land right off the highway there. And I did actually meet with CDOT since our last hearing. And we discussed two possible access roads that they seem accepting of, which one would be directly into that substation and battery area, and then the other would be right into those PV arrays. And if you see the three different sections, those, that's going to be what's the fenced area. So there will be proper flow of, there will be allowable flow of migratory animals there. Technically, that could be a migration corridor that's going north and south there with transmission lines, because that would not be fenced.
I'm familiar with the area and I've seen a lot of alt cross right there, so.
And to speak to your comments about agricultural tanks, we would love, anytime we can combine agriculture with our projects, we would love to. Now, what I do is kind of a balancing act. I feel like I'm an acrobat sometimes, because I've got different agencies wanting different things. Something that emergency response might want is going to contradict what CPW wants. And this project, CPW does not want any sheep there at all. And sheep grazing is is one of the best ways to be able to combine agriculture and voltages. So maybe if we get further along in the project, we can convince them otherwise, but they are concerned about the spread of disease, I think, to some of the there's a species of concern.
Well, the owners would need to build them to for wildfire mitigation, keep that grass down and then have to own it. And but as far as cattle grazing, there are a few around in Mesa County, one of them has adopted a resolution requiring agricultural tapes to be used in all of their solar applications. And what that would do would be increase the cost to you as as the builder, the contractor, to get that done, but it would be dual purpose for the rancher that is involved, taking graze out of that also. And that's that's how Mesa County was looking at it.
I was a big proponent of that early on until I did realize how much it increases the cost. If you want to have cattle grazing, you've got to raise them up very high. And increasing the height of those panels more than doubles the cost of the entire facility. If we go back to my initial, some of those initial slides, you'll see our estimated cost is two hundred and fifty million dollars with an estimated tax revenue of twenty million dollars for the life of a project. If we were to raise those panels up to be seven, eight feet tall, you know, at the access, so really close to fifteen to twenty feet tall, it would it would make it not commercially viable.
Because the project, if you have to do that, does it take up more space?
Would you raise the panels? No, necessarily it would not take up more space, but it increases insurance cost, it increases the construction cost, the amount of steel that's needed. I mean, I was shocked to see how much it increased the cost by. Sheep does not, actually sheep decreases the cost, because insurance on on these projects is pretty expensive and it decreases what the insurance cost is, because the likelihood of sheep damaging the panels is lower than the likelihood of mechanical mower damaging them. But as anybody who's a cattle rancher would know, they would destroy these panels, I mean, they would run up against them. And maybe there might be some advancements in the future that that make them stronger and prevent cattle from being able to destroy them, but that has not happened.
There's a few tests lost up around down to Westminster area.
Do you know if they raise, is that how they?
They didn't raise it that high, just high enough to get them above or more than cattle can reach. But what they do have to do is they have to use larger square tubing, you know, to mount the solar panels on, and they have to hide the wiring. You have to hide the wiring if you put sheep in there too, they'll eat the wires. But I don't know, if sheep roams cattle in the summer, I can see a lot of benefits to it, but protection from hail.
See, I haven't gotten that yet this year, so.
I'm confident, I'm confident that the advancements in the industry are going to to come quickly, but I don't know if they're there yet.
So the project construction, you mentioned there's going to be very little concrete.
Yes, sir.
Just quality, you have those pylons onto the ground, the ratings taken and fencing, you're pretty much going to do much if you need four feet of steel here, you might need two on the back end of it. That's my understanding of the property.
Yes, sir.
Then one of the questions I have, you, on your actual plan, water supply, approximately three hundred and fifty to three hundred and seventy acre feet of water would be required in the project. So that's just a little bit, two glasses of water. Where where are you going to be procuring that water from? And I think, and I, I'm just going to yield that that I am not a water expert, but where is the water going to be coming from?
We will be trucking the water in from wherever is going to be the best place for us to purchase the water from. We know that, you know, water is a big concern in Colorado here, especially in eastern Colorado. And we will, we will buy it from a source that is is not going to cause any sort of environmental products.
Very good. And I really want to thank you for talking about the corridors, the wildlife corridors. That has become a very common point of conversation in any meeting that we go to, whether it's bird migration, whether it is deer and all the wildlife that goes on to do that. So for that, I really want to thank you addressing that. And one last question I have here. The one of the bigger points on the Senate Bill twenty four to twelve, last Friday, in one of our conversations, we had a commissioner from the Mountain County came back with a conversation, and this might end up being, and then, of course, this is for future perspective, but I think as the landowner, I'd be concerned that simply you leave the property and move on without having to perhaps even reseated, revegetated. But again, you know, one of the one of the key things about county government or government in general, we're not going to be taking, this is not going to be anything that you order your shop. But it's, these are some pretty good guidelines to maintain the longevity of that piece of parcel of land for many, many generations. And then, of course, part two, and that would be once again between the landlord, if you were going to fence the property and the landowner wanted the fence to remain, that again becomes the agreement between the two. I went through your entire document. The, and you were at the planning, Land Use meeting, will this adversely affect light vision from passersby? Anybody that's went on to one sixty, are they going to be, the driving is going to be impeded by future light that escapes from there? Do you have any, any barriers to prevent that?
Yes, sir. There is already a film that is added to these panels to be able to prevent glare. But one of the additional ways that we can mitigate the glare from the site is by adjusting the angle that these panels are tilted. They are on single axis trackers and they're going to follow the sun from the east to the west. And we can slightly adjust those angles if there is any sort of glare impact on the road. And something we could, we could definitely incorporate whenever we submit our final site plan is to do a glare analysis and look at, there will only be two points, I think, that we would be concerned about, which would be to the east and the west on Highway one sixty. And we can do a glare analysis on that final site plan to then show, you know, what that impact is and then adjust the angle accordingly. Thank you. I mean, we skipped over it because I didn't go into our presentation, but we we are a developer-ownermade operator of these projects. We are a US-based company, so it's been very important for us to develop strong community relationships and maintain a, you know, successful project throughout its life. And that's why, you know, we're a little bit different than than other developers. I'm not saying we're the only ones that develop, own and operate, but it is very important for us to maintain good community relationships.
Thank you. At this point in time, I don't have any other questions for you, sir.
I guess I am.
So the minerals under the solar facility, are they owned by the surface owner?
The majority of them are. Not all of them, I believe, I believe we submitted, or no, I believe we did submit notification letters to the mineral interest owners. If we look in the application, we have those mineral interest owners, I think there was three of them, maybe four, if I recall correctly, but nobody contested the project.
One more. The National Environmental Policy Act review process or review process, one of the, given the location of this particular project, is there any requirements for?
There is no need for performance. Then I'm aware of this town. We try to avoid sites with the fires.
Yes, well, you know, in one of the early settlers, the fiber settlers that worked with the region and Homestead, it's somehow, sometimes, you know, they tend to kind of overdo that. But you have failures from CDOT, CPW, from Department of Natural Resources, and your application to be a president, I guess, that we initially can. You know, the most important thing for us is in forty years, I hope I'm still around,
Me too.
The decommissioning, the decommissioning is going to be one of the things that is so very important as we get into the process. And I think the United States will continue to see projects being decommissioned without any grants. Colorado really wants to lead the way, and San Luis County wanted to lead the way in having standards as we go through that listed basics, that all counties are pretty much having the same information about the nation.
Yes, sir.
Sir, if you have a seat, I don't have any other questions at the moment, commissioners? No other questions, have a seat. Anybody else that would like to speak on behalf of this proponent project? Any comments for the proponent in support of the last call? Any comments for the proponent of this project? Here and now, I'm going to now ask any opponent to this project, online or present. Any comments from any opponent for this project? And third and last call for any opponent of this particular project? Application MF twenty twenty five, needing features, solar. Here and now, commissioners, at this time, I think we have gathered enough information. If it is the world commissioners, we can go into executive session, but I'm going to report to you, I thought commissioners.
I don't need a technical session.
Commissioners, if I may, I would ask the board to enter into executive session, just so I'm clear as to exactly what you're going to be considering.
Very good.
Commissioners? If I may, I don't know, if Karen, you know, it's not going to happen, like, we bet on that, that's fine.
No, you can ask, just they can't make any considerations in executive, but I can advise that if there's questions.
I'll make the motion to go on. I'll second. Commissioner, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Yes, give us a few minutes, we'll be back.